Let's just bring this up. Let's just go through the agenda.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
All right, the chair will call this meeting to order. Do we have anybody else there?
We have no one.
Okay, great. That makes me feel good. Item number one is the presentation of our Moose Grant. That's this item deals with the preservation of jail documents. Old jail books that we have as to who was admitted to the jail. We have a grant that we get that they restore historical documents that we have. And Gwen was supposed to be here, but we're having some communication difficulties. So the chair is going to push that off. Item number two is we need to approve and sign the TAN documents that we do yesterday. We can sign them afterwards, right?
Sure can.
Okay, all right. So let's, before we go, let's talk about the budget work we've done. Let's move to items, item of old and new business. We've got a request for an expenditure here regarding bedding. So Raymond, can you do the background?
I'll leave it up. I'll give you the background. So we received, about a month or six weeks ago, we received a request from community. Actually, it came from Mike Joyle from Dover to see if we could fund out of the non-county money. But because we're the fiscal agent, it needed to go through us to get some mattresses to that were of a specific type so that the C, Community Action, could, you know, set them up, but then move them when the warming center was not in place. In other words, so that it wouldn't be so bulky that they wouldn't have any place to store it. So I asked Jody to shop around for those mattresses in cooperation with community action personnel. And so now I'll leave it over to Jody.
So the first quote that they received is your top quote from American Bedding. And that was at the 9146. So then I shopped around and your second quote is from Heavy Duty Bunk Beds, which priced out at the 7798. Community Actions then wanted single bunks put in and they didn't have it in the first quote. So then I had them give us another quote from Heavy Duty, which came to your 12151. And then I received a quote from Bob Barker that we use for the jail.
Yeah.
Which is ridiculous. It's $35,000. So, I mean, that one's out of it, but I wanted to give the different quotes for each of them. The 12-1 quote is the one that Community Actions wants, but where it's over our 10,000 is why I need to bring it to you guys.
Okay, so let me do a little more background on this. Folks here, my colleagues. Community Action has a location in Rochester. They took over the home up there. There was a home that was probably from the one near.
Gassman?
What's that?
Was it Gassman?
No, I can't. It was one up across from the Ridge Development down the road there.
The Almost Center.
The Home, right, right, right. Community Action took that over. Stafford, you know, Stafford's.
Almost Center of Stafford County.
Right. They took, CAP took that over. In the discussions that I was having with the mayors and city managers, CAP indicated when we did a, when we did a review of how many beds were available for a backup plan for the Willand Warming Center, CAP said they had a room there that they could use for overflow if Willand had issues. And they were willing to do that, but they didn't have the bed, they didn't have any bunks. They didn't have the right bunks. So that's when Joyle asked, reached out to Ray and myself and asked us to see if we could help them with beds. Now, if you've ever gone to the Willand Center, they have bunk beds in there, but they're steel and they weigh a ton. And I mean, they're heavy. They're like 600, 700 pounds. They're not like, they were built.
They're like jailed.
And that's what the Bob Barker one is.
Right, right. They're rugged and they're heavy. So I guess that what happened was CAP, as I understood it, CAP wanted the single beds because they could fit more in the, actually in the room.
Yeah.
And that's the reason why they asked for the single bed instead of the bunk beds. Because once you put them in, I don't care where you put them, you need 10 men and a boy to move them because they're big and they're bulky. So as I understood it, they wanted to have the single beds.
So they wanted the bunks too?
They did.
Yep, but with the heavy duty bunks, it's like your firehouse bunk beds. So they can be taken down. It's not like the jail bunk beds.
Jail bunk beds.
Yes.
All right.
As you remember, we still have, I brought them down. I walked them down to see our jail bunk beds that we took out when we closed the annex.
Right.
And they're all in my tent down back.
Yeah.
And, because they stored it in there. And, and they're, I mean, we could have delivered them, you know, with community work. But honestly speaking, boss, I mean, there, somebody's going to get hurt moving those things around.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they were just, they're just so heavy.
Yeah.
And, and you know, they're, they're jail beds.
That's right. They're designed to be, not be, not to be destroyed.
So all of these bunks can be converted into a single too?
They can.
Yep, so any of the bunks that they have, if they choose to then put it to a single, it's just screwed together. They can unscrew it and move it to a single.
Okay, so it's not, it's, we're not talking the big, heavy.
Nope, the heavy, heavy ones are from like Bob Barker. That would be what your jail has right now.
Yeah, we don't.
These ones are, they're firehouse bunk beds that can hold the weight.
Okay.
Bedbug free.
Yeah, bedbug free stuff, yeah. You gotta have that. Yay, yay, yay. Okay, so anyway. So it's the $12,151 bid in the Westmore looking at.
Yeah.
And you've got at least two or three other prices from the folks.
Yeah.
Everything that I got from American Bedding too, I reached out to them. They gave me the same quote that Crossroads received. So they didn't change prices, anything coming with me. So it wasn't even worth bringing that quote because it was the exact same thing.
Exact same thing.
And, and you know, we just didn't want to take a blind quote, you know. We wanted Jody to do the research and it's a good thing she did because, you know, then we would have gotten the wrong stuff if we'd gone with CAP's original quote.
Right, right.
Yeah, we would end up sending it and all, I don't want to think about that.
Just to let you know, this is not coming out of, ultimately, this is coming out of at least a pot that has been created that is being donated, well, given to the State Howley Act and the future capacity by the cities. So that's where this one is coming from.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no county funds.
No county. All right, so I get a motion there? Yeah.
Make a motion for you.
Awarded.
It's Christmas time.
Any questions? You know, okay, it's always bigger than I think. So, hey, Jody.
Thank you very much.
For your work on that.
She really worked hard on, she worked hard on that to get that done. I think that's a good thing.
Okay. So, any of the old and new business?
No, I'm sorry, Mr., but Gwen is here if you want to do the Moose Plate Grant.
Okay.
Where is she?
Gwen? You gonna pop in for one?
Both ways. You want to come in?
Probably not.
Talk to, talk us about the books?
Books. We have them.
Yeah?
Um, so this is the last grant period that we had.
Is it? Okay.
Three different volumes. We're not doing any this year, but, because I have to go down to the basement of the courthouse to see what I can find because we've, we've used up the books in the jail. Um, so this is the last, the last.
It feels like Christmas, open Christmas.
I know, isn't it? Did you want to open one?
Well, unless I get a weapon.
There you go. I'm sorry, did you want to open this one?
So the difference, Mr. Chairman, just so we're clear, because there's always, you know, the question of why we can get the Moose Plate Grant of this and, but we can't for the books and deeds. Again, as Kathy mentioned, the books and deeds are statutory requirement. So therefore, we can't apply for the grant. This, on the other hand, is just trying to, we occasionally have. We occasionally have family members who come and want to look at their history of their loved one. And they get a lot of history out of these books.
And they all get digitized. Aaron's doing, Aaron does a great job getting digitized and up on the county website so that everybody can see them.
Great.
So, yeah, so there's some, just some old ledgers and stuff. And honestly, I don't have a lot of information about these at all as to what they actually pertain to, but it's got like the price of pigs that were sold and that sort of stuff. Revenues in, revenues out. They're, they're, they're cool.
We need to go back to that kind of budget.
Yeah.
Get some chickens and goats.
Yeah, and, you know, stud service for boards. But, yeah, it's got the different, some of them are board bills, some of them are just money in, money out. Honestly, that one in particular, I don't know why they granted it to conserve it because it doesn't seem to have a ton of information in it, but yes, it does. Yeah.
Must be the circumstances.
Want to see that?
Yeah.
Really, some of my beloved members of my family from drunkenness.
Drunkenness and idleness. Seem to be big ones.
Idle, idleness. Put you in jail for idleness.
Mr. Drew, eight bunches of potatoes for $10.
$10? Oh, no, $1.
Two bigs, $10, wow.
Well, I mean, how many, how big is the bag? It might be a really big bag.
A calf is $10. Wow. Two heifers, $100. Oh my God.
Yeah, we don't need to save the paper. It's fine.
Well, thanks for your work on that one.
No problem. Like I said, I'll poke around at some point when I feel like getting dusty and dirty and see what I can drum up for, to apply next spring.
See this?
I'm good. Thank you. I've saw, I've seen.
Yeah, they were just some of those papers.
I'm going to always send that one back.
And we need, need history.
Yeah, it's cool. It's worth preserving. Hopefully, somebody can get some information out of it at some point. Like I said, all the volumes, some of which are more interesting than this one, are a Huppin County website. So like children supported by Stafford County, the orphans and stuff like that. That's all off in the county website. They're very interesting. You know, keep it towards them if anybody needs history.
You coming to the P25?
Are you going to be there?
No.
Thank you, thank you, Gwen. Mr. Chairman, can I just enter, I should have said one thing under new business?
Yeah.
Or old business. The roof bids are due on Friday. I would like, meaning tomorrow, I'd just like permission to open them and then just table them till you come in for your next meeting.
What time do you open them?
Shoot, do you know, Janet, what time they're being opened tomorrow?
When I say new, nine, but.
I can, I'll, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you know.
Yeah, okay.
I just.
I'm coming in tomorrow anyways.
Because you know that we have to award that bid and have a signed contract by the 31st, so.
So we can, we can award the bid.
We, we had 20 vendors come to look at Hyder House. And we had 10 vendors to look at this roof.
Wow.
Because we had a sign-in sheet, you know, because you have to attend the walkthrough. And we had 20 roofers for, for Hyder and, and then 10 for here. Well, I'm just letting you know. I was shocked. It was like, it was like we needed the sheriff's department to direct traffic over there. You know?
That's telling you about the economy.
Yeah, well, we're bound to get the best price.
Bad for the economy. Good for us, but bad for the economy. We, we, we usually have only one or two for the last, since COVID.
I'm surprised when you see how much buildings seems to be going on.
Yeah, yeah. Unless there's some people that's coming up from down south.
Well, there could be. I mean, we advertise, you know, we advertise this well, so we'll see what happens. Is Gwen still out there? Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
So is it okay that I open those on Friday? All right, and if you're here, you know, that'd be great.
There's no objection to that.
No.
We've done that before.
I mean, it's senseless for you to come in just to rip open an envelope.
Right.
Nine AM.
Nine AM.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah. All right, and that's good. We can always come back to old and new business or something else came to life over here. Do you want to start working on a budget?
Yes, please.
I'm going to let somebody take this seat.
Is it me?
Yeah, do you want to go first? Do you have something to do?
Christmas party.
You have a doubt? You can be a few minutes late.
Linda? You're on. So they have copies of your budget. We, we call it Resident Services.
Excuse me, George? I'm going to put these on your desk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can have a signing party, yeah.
So I, I do need to tell you before we start in this, Mr. Chairman, that with cooperation from the staff, but mostly with Linda's prior knowledge, is where we've gotten our significant rate increases at Riverside. The last one or the next one being January 1st, you know, will come into place at $17 a day.
So you know the King of Carol, right?
No, no, from Maine.
Oh, you came from Maine?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Could you just give the commissioners, just like a two, two-minute briefing on the changeover from the two systems?
Yeah, so they used to use RUGS 4 and they phased that out with the federal guidelines changing to make all states either have the option of doing an optional payment assessment or PDPM. And I was hoping for PDPM and they after did a left for PDPM. So basically, it means that our rate is set, plus we get an extra amount based off of nursing acuity. So we try to capture the things like dressing changes, certain medical conditions with certain symptom presentation. And if we can capture that and send that in, they give us the standard rate plus an additional amount. I think it's twice a year. So that's kind of what we've been focusing on and that has been my strong point is PDPM. Because where I came from in Maine, I was, they jumped me right into that. So I was less versed with the RUGS 4 and more on PDPM. So I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, I'm excited about.
Yeah. So we just kind of focus on the documentation, looking for trends. And then when we see something that may be leading towards a way, we throw an assessment in there so that way we can capture that higher rate and submit it.
Right. Well, it made a difference in revenue.
Well, not only to make a difference in revenue, but it, it makes a difference in the recognition. Linda's been able to capture what we haven't been able to capture so well in the past. And that is our acuity. So acuity, let's say it's based on a 1-0. In the past, we'd be like an 8-8 or an 8-7, and now we're 1.105. So we're over that 1-0 by 10%, which is what's translated into, you know, a $17 rate increase in, in, starting January 1st, which is the second highest rate increase that was given out to anyone of the 78 nursing homes. And the only one that was higher, somehow, I think it was a makeup because they got a $12 reduction.
Last time.
Last time. And we've never gotten a reduction. So, you know, that was the only one that was higher than the $17 and change that we got. And I attribute that to Linda and her staff and her encouragement of the nursing staff to properly document the care that we're giving so that we're properly, we're properly reimbursed for it.
Does the new system allow the capturing of the behavioral fees that we've always done?
Well, we, remember that we still have a separate behavior unit that I'm still fighting with the state about, you know, increases for. And I know that will come because the state needs us much more than we need the state.
But separate from the behavior, and I'm talking about behaviors in general.
Yes.
It does capture some of that.
Yeah, so the lowest reimbursement rate is called physical deconditioning. It's basically like anybody who doesn't capture into a higher rate, all groups down into physical deconditioning, the lowest possible reimbursement rate. Second to that is behavioral. So if they exhibit a certain amount of behaviors and they have a certain amount of cognition based off of their FIMS testing that we do, that would put them at a slightly higher level than physical deconditioning to reimburse you for the behaviors.
And then, but then when you add that to all of their, you know, to any potential ADL or, you know, physical detriment, you know, that's just another step up the, of the process.
Well, that's why they designed it that way because people who, the behaviors often have, are more independent with ADLs or they only need queuing. They don't need such substantial assistance. They're not as dependent, but they reimburse more because they know that it takes more staff time to be able to get those ADLs completed because of the queuing and encouragement that they need.
So just to let, you know, Jewel and Sean benefit. Simply, what this is, what, what, what we're talking about is how sick people are. And as a result of how sick we are, documenting how sick we are, okay? In a computerized system, and then that system is transferred to the state and it, it works into cost reports and all kinds of other things. But the bottom line is that it sets the rate of our reimbursement, okay?
For those people on Medicaid.
For those people on Medicaid.
Which is everybody we have, but one.
All the fancy, all the fancy terms she was using.
Sorry about that.
All, that's all, I mean, those are the professional terms, but. We use them down for us dummies. That's what we're talking about.
The biggest term that, that she used that would be of interest to you was ADL, which is assisted. Activity, activities of daily living.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that'd be like eating, medication, bathing, you know, those things.
And our, people aren't necessarily more sicker than they were. I mean, some of them are, but I think the problem with when I first got here was we weren't necessarily capturing the level.
Right.
And it wasn't representing in the documentation to be able to get that.
That new, that new system where it captures those things that we weren't able to capture under the rugs. Under rugs, oh, RUGS 4, right?
Yes, that's right.
It really does. And, and, you know, Linda's been nothing short of a genius in making sure we capture all that stuff. And it's something that's talked about almost every day. I mean, in Morning Report, you know, you're right there, you know, saying, hey, let's do this. Hey, let's do that. Be sure we capture this. Be sure we capture that.
Well, I've had, I've, I've heard of the work you've been doing over there. It's greatly appreciated. It's made, it's made a huge difference to us. Ray has pointed out at the time, the re-increase that we've gotten, which is always good news.
Yes.
Especially when, while they're rearranging the chairs on the Titanic. And that's basically what we're doing. Okay, but anyway, your budget's flat, so it is what it is. And it's necessary and it's required. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. All right, we're good. I'll ask you, if any of my colleagues have any questions. Okay, happy holidays.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Linda. Let me know how that goes at Hyder, okay?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm going to check face with you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll next.
Activities, probably.
And, and one of, one of the problems we have, Christina, she always dresses this way.
I don't get down today. There's no to to.
You're good, Gwen. Thank you. Why, actually, could I talk to you for a minute?
All right, your budget looks great.
Sure. So it's kind of hard because you have the third quarter listed. Our last quarter of the year is our most expensive because we have our craft fair, Christmas, end of year purchases, subscription renewals. So with our outside fees and services, it is a little bit increased. We had, we have a few entertainers at the residents request more, but unfortunately, they're at a higher rate to pay than the others. So trying to do that once a month, so that's why the increase is there a little bit. And then we also have our copy machine monthly payment is coming out of this budget as well, which is new to us last year. So that's incorporated in that cost as well. For dues licenses, we got rid of one of our subscriptions we weren't really utilizing. So it's going to be a little bit less. For the supplies and expenses, this is where our music therapist comes out of. And she comes in and she does room visits. She wrote a song with the residents last Christmas with them. So there's a lot of different things that she does. This year, because we had that COVID outbreak, she wasn't able to come in. Her husband had bypass surgery and then she got sick. So there's a good chunk that wasn't utilized, but actually thankfully not because we have a lot of increase in costs, you know, craft supplies, things that we used to pay, like $5 is now double, you know. So there's just a lot of increases there. The copy machine is also listed in here. It was new to us, so we kind of estimated it would be about $1,000 for copies, but it's actually $2,000. So that's also incorporated in that cost. So there's a few, you know, the air gas monthly fee, those costs have gone up as well. So those are all coming out of that budget. So it is a little bit higher than this year, but hoping you'll take that into consideration.
After this.
Travel kind of remains the same. And then our last part is the new equipment. So we had a storage area in, at Riverside that had a lot of our craft fair items, miscellaneous holiday decorations and everything like that. We had a sewer pipe burst in there. So trying to see what we could do with what we had, but hoping that next year we can replenish some of the stuff because we could really use some more Fourth of July things and stuff like that.
Yeah, you're coming sewer line.
Yes.
That was, that was the sewer line that led us to looking at the sewer lines.
Yes.
That was the original sewer line.
Where's that at now?
In the basement.
No, no, where, where is the?
They're going to start, they're in there doing some dye testing. I don't know if that, it makes a little less sense to me because I, you know, that's, they're in there doing some dye testing with the idea of starting as soon as they figure out the plans. Because as you know, we, the building, when the building was built, we never got any as-built. You know, because it was built 55 years ago, so.
They didn't have as-built.
Well, they did. Somebody screwed up.
Yeah, get on the phone, call Paul Dumont.
No, I'm not.
No, and, and, yeah, please do that so you can basically tell you.
He's still alive.
He's still.
Oh, yeah? And as alert as can be.
And, yeah, you get all those marbles. You have any questions about what happened there?
Oh.
He'll, he'll give you, he'll give you a.
Can I ask you what kind of craft supplies you use? What do you mean?
We use everything.
The delegation cut the budget by.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you were talking about.
I mean, like paper.
So a lot of paper, yep. You know, fabric is another one. Like, we do, thankfully, get a lot of donations, so that helps. But, you know, markers we go through all the time.
I, I do craft, so I can, I need to go in and craft it.
Yeah, oh my gosh, we would definitely. So and anything we can't use, we will pass along to like the daycare or other places that could benefit from it. So it always has a home. That's what I.
Multiples of like one thing or like.
I always say we take everything. Anything.
You have like, in a group at a time, so.
So if it's like a whole, if it's the whole facility, we'll have about 20 to 30. If it's just on the unit, it's about 10. But again, it always depends on the day.
Put them in multiples like 30, then there would be enough.
That would be amazing.
We'll find that again.
Nice, in the new year, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Christina manages to find ways to do things that, you know, with, with donated items that are so clever that, you know, her and her staff done some really amazing stuff. And this year, at the craft fair, we made.
Over $8,000 now, and that's the highest since COVID. So, and we had to move it to Hyder. We didn't do like the full food spread and stuff. So, and that was all like profit, so.
And that's the stuff that, so this is the stuff that the residents, you know, work with activities to make. And.
Yeah. Yep.
So we moved it, you know, we had to move it to the vacant wing at Hyder because we had COVID at the time.
So.
As we do now.
Yep. The last item on the new equipment is the rolling whiteboards. So we have a rolling chalkboard, but it's really hard for residents to see. You know, a lot of them have visual impairments. So having a whiteboard with the markers, yeah. So that's on there as well.
They play a lot of games.
That chalkboard is 100 years old.
It probably is.
Been there as long as I have.
Yeah, it's been there forever.
Yep.
And it came out of the old home. And, and then. That came, that came over on the arch, yeah. That's how they don't use it in schools and. That's why they don't use it in schools anymore. Yeah, the chalk is toxic, yeah. Whatever the new spin is, yeah. All right, well, activities has done a great job, as usual. You know, a little job, but I want to get a bunch of looks fine from here from my perspective. I wonder if anybody has any questions regarding activities. The heartbeats of the facility is that.
On my way, I double it.
I remember you, I remember, I remember we used to have a woodworking shop and we used to have the men do woodworking over there, but. Yeah, I don't have any tools anymore.
And, and Christine doesn't always dress this way. It's, it's you, it's our, it's our.
It's Christmas parties.
It's a Christmas party. Anyway. Yeah, we do Christmas parties by the unit, not by the. Well, two reasons, it, it's really impossible to, to do the whole facility at one time because the residents' needs are so different.
Yeah.
But the other issue is that it's a COVID spreader. Death, if you're asking me, how many cases, it's three. All in unit twos, brought on by the father of a resident.
Father of a resident.
Yeah, came in to visit his son and, uh, then went homesick and gave his son COVID.
Hallelujah.
So we found what we call ground zero. Um, it sounds a little over dramatic, but, um. You know, we, we found where it began.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, or fortunately, um, the health of the two of the three residents is pretty good. And the third resident is getting better, although I haven't read this morning's report yet.
Thank you so much.
Back to your Christmas party.
Thanks, Kenny. Sorry if I kept you too long.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm the sheriff's department here, Mr. Chairman, in, in bulk.
Is, uh, is the new sheriff, remember?
Yes, she is. It's about a flat budget. My name.
Hi.
Sheriff, or, or whichever one's your most comfortable.
How are you?
Sure, um, can I just give a little, a little overview, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, two sheriffs here.
Really one.
Well, once you've earned a title, you never lose the title.
Oh, a marriageist.
Yes, so sheriff, sheriff, a marriageist, yeah. Um, submitted a budget. Um, I mirrored the, that budget off of the Reynolds report.
Yeah.
Um, which meant with, with Joe retiring. Any minute, and with, um, Major Burke having left a few weeks ago, a month ago. I eliminated one of the positions. I funded the other position as an open position. So that the new sheriff could pick her chief deputy. So you'll see, I created a new line item for chief deputy. It's O five.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's, you know, that's a comparative salary, uh, to, uh, uh, what. Between the major and, and sheriff, um. Which should be adequate funds, um, for, uh, sheriff to do as she wishes. Consistent with, um, what, what's in the, it, it, what's been the history of that, that position. So that's the long and short of it.
Okay.
Um, and I'll leave the rest up to them.
All right. What's going on in that department, so?
Yes, sir.
The, uh. So. I read the Reynolds report. I guess my, my question is, is that, as you had an opportunity, I know I forwarded the report.
I have, we're here to, yes.
Okay, all right. So is there anything that's happening there that we ought to know about? I guess that's what it boils down to.
Uh, I think Mr. Bauer kind of summed it up. We had Chief Charles Reynolds come in and do a review after the brave debacle. Um, just have an outside person come in to take a look at everything and he's an expert in that area. Some of the reason for the increase in rank structure evolved over the years. Uh, if you want to go back in history a little bit, prior to COVID, uh, when ICE was at its peak. At any, in any one day during the week, we'd have twenty to twenty-five deputies all throughout New England. That's how big the operation was. So that kind of expanded under, uh, Sheriff Dubois and then, um, Sheriff Brave kind of went askew, as we all know. We don't have to get into that. Um, but that's the reason for the, the rank structure, the way it, it sits. Uh, as far as detectives and investigations, uh, there's a definite need for investigations over the jail, which ties into our federal contracts. Um, but if you go back twenty years in this office, uh, you'd have a sheriff and probably six deputies. Because the only charge that we have legally is civil and local transports. Taking on, um, the federal contracts is a big increase of workload onto the sheriff's office. Because without us, uh, the federal people will not keep their inmates, uh, across the street. Because they do not have the staff to transport them, to bring them up to the hospital and stay with them twenty-four seven with, with two security deputies there. Um, they don't have any of those facilities and they don't own one jail. Uh, the Bureau of Prisons won't touch any inmate until they're sentenced. So once someone's arrested by the FBI or whatever, they, they go to the US Marshals for custody, which is here. We are basically the US Marshals and they're here for at least a year and till they're sentenced, sometimes beyond that. So, uh, it's a, it's a big, uh, increase to our workload. Um, because I've been on the phone several times at night with the chief deputy US marshal. When we had two inmates in the hospital, very difficult to, the staff, and basically alls I got was your responsibility. Your contract. So, and, and we've, they've stepped up. The, particularly the supervisors in the sheriff's office have been unbelievable in the past couple of years. Unfortunately, today, people just don't want to work. I talked to colleagues in law enforcement. All across the board, Navy ad, and I have, uh, friends in private industry. It's terrible. So I don't know what the answer is there right now. That's our biggest challenge. We have zero applicants for deputy sheriffs right now. And we feel the big increase, especially in medical transports across the street now. Unfortunately, we had to reschedule some of those because there's just nobody left, uh, to do the transports. So we're kind of in a little bit of crisis mode, but we're not alone. And I know you, you know that with the jail as well.
The jail, my state police is down the third, I mean, I did. Every department or some devices don't even have a department. Cause I can't pay anybody to get.
Uh, honestly, Mr. Chairman, the rescheduling of medical appointments happens everywhere. Um, and it happens at Riverside, um, and, and what, what happens is Ben gone? Um, so if there needs to be a rescheduling of a medical appointment because of, um, a lack of transportation or whatever. I take it you triage those things?
We do triage those things. I've been in contact directly with the sheriff's department, try to mitigate some of those transports if they're not necessary. Um, and I think we've, and I've created a dialogue that works between the two departments and we've been able to kind of, you know, make it happen.
I know we, when I discussed that about, you know, to try and reduce the load on, uh, on the sheriff's department, yeah.
Well, we have the same, you know, part of, part of the same issue at Riverside where, you know, I might direct our nurses, uh, you know, triage those medical appointments. Uh, and, and I'll be honest with you, um, at least the doctors that we deal with on the outside have been really good about. You know, fitting us in, in other places, not making us go to the end of the line and start all over again. Uh, cause you know, some of, to see specialists nowadays, uh, you could wait months.
And when we, when we kind of weigh in the geography of the appointments too, a lot of the inmates of federal, we made some of the INS ones we get. They've already got, um, treatment started somewhere, you know, in Boston, for example. So I'm trying to move those that they're affiliated with like a mass and bring them. We have a contract with, I worked on this hospital, I'm able to get those appointments, move cardiology up here instead of Boston. So when I can do that, I do that. Um, I have a meeting with my chronic care nurse that I've established, um, a meeting time from June three. Every weekend Fridays and Kelly, my administrative assistant, to kind of look at things overall and, and do exactly that. Triage based on necessity and acuity, what we're going to do, how we're going to do it and how that impacts the sheriff's department.
And, and, and remember these ladies and gentlemen, and, and I'm speaking specifically about house correction. Get a hundred times better medical care than they get when they're outside, when they're on their own on the outside. You know, there's no doubt about that in my mind.
I think one of the things that's important to remember as we talk about the need for transports and then increase in transports is that. In, in just within the past eight years, we've seen a significant increase in exceptionally ill individuals that are taken into custody. They are, uh, they are suffering from a lack of care. They are suffering from, um, uh, medical issues. That just require an elevated level of care that's beyond the scope of our competent medical staff. Um, and, and they're just, they're just ill coming in, uh, through the door. They do get, uh, proper medical care. When they come into the facility, they get better medical care than they were. Receiving when they were outside, um, but we're just seeing a, uh, less healthy population that's coming in over the past five to eight years.
And, and it's, a lot of that has to do with self-medication. You know, they're, they have a medical problem, but they're medicating themselves in, in the, in the community. You know, with illegal drugs to, you know, mask the problem, uh, by dealing with the symptoms. And, and I think that's, that's one of the biggest.
A lot of that stuff is all fallout too from opioid crisis.
Well, we'll, we'll give you the classic example, right? What was your name, Chris? That we just got dismissed to Los. Alyssa Burson came to us, uh, after refusing, walking out of Wentworth Douglas. Refusing care, refusing surgery that you know she's need, she knew she needed for a couple of years. Uh, we had her in custody. We did everything we were supposed to do. Uh, she was. Under the influence when she came to us, uh, she ended up dying, um, and the court said, hey, you know. You guys did everything you could, dismissed the case, of course. And, and, um, but it's an example of someone who's using drugs to cover. What their real medical needs are. And, and it's a shame, but unfortunately it's, it's a, it's a fact of life. And I'm not, I'm not revealing anything that's not a matter of court records now. I mean, you know, I'm not revealing any, any HIPAA issues. It's all litigated. Uh, but that's an example of, of what happens, uh, you know, and, and what Ben's faced with. In, in terms of, of, you know, the detail of the transports. But we try, you know, we try and delay them as much as we can, but some of them are real emergencies.
There, there, we've, we've made significant improvements in the need for transport. The best example is with methadone. We go out and we get, uh, doses of methadone to have in the facility. So that we don't have to take people daily to, uh, to methadone treatment. That's something that, uh, that we've, uh, brought into our, uh, our operational process. And that significantly decreases the cost of transportation out. And it also significantly decreases possible choke points because when they come out of the, the facility. It's a, it, uh, it, it's a less secure environment. And when they're in a less secure environment, it, it poses specific risks. So we've tried to, we've tried to, uh, minimize those transports by bringing medications that they would otherwise receive out at clinics. And we can administer those now in our facility.
And, and I, I don't need to tell anybody that's around this table that when. When an inmate, or when we are in most vulnerable for potential escape is when the inmate is out of the facility. And that's no reflection on, on the sheriff's department. It's simple reflection of. Opportunity, you know, more so than anything. So it's really hard if, if, you know, when we were transporting to the methadone clinic, it was relatively at the same time. You know, so.
Yeah, somebody should, somebody just watch the pattern and.
That, that's exactly what, that's exactly what, remember, you know, we, we, we think about the inmates, oh, they're county inmates. No, no, they were El Chapo's cousin.
Right.
You know, they're, uh, who was with us.
Right.
Who planned an escape, uh, but fortunately through the diligence of our correctional staff and the sheriff's department and the US Marshal. We took care of that in advance. But I mean, that'll give you the idea of, of, you know, some of the seriousness of, of the ladies and gentlemen that we deal with at the jail.
So some of the things that we're seeing is a lot like, um, you probably recognize in spirit, but of course tranquilizers, but you're mixing with fentanyl and everything else. What that does is it produces a situation where you've got necrotic tissue. Somebody injects into a tissue, it becomes necrotic and we see a lot of abscesses and ulcers, which I can't manage at our level of care. So they have to go out for an incision and drain of an abscess and then IV, in about a treatment. Um, I have implemented a new scoring system that the level at which they get sent out is seventeen. But it's a whole new process that I've implemented. It's, I think it's reduced some of the transports on emergency basis. So.
I understand, uh, fallouts of opioid. Oh, the old, the crisis, but the settlement of all those cases. Uh, was the fact that pharmaceutical companies now, uh, can no longer be held liable for any drug they manufacture. At all. So. There are indeed departments coming up with any, any kind of drug that they want. It doesn't make any difference what it is. Okay, they have absolutely no liability now. They have, they have, it was just like tobacco companies. And we saw the tobacco crisis twenty years ago. The state actually got forty, forty-four million dollars. We was, the college was supposed to share in that revenue. We never got any, but the state took it all. When that occurred, the cigarette companies doubled and tripled the amount of nicotine in cigarettes to get people addicted. And as a result of that, had, with no liability, so. And, and, and that same dynamic is playing out with pharmaceutical manufacturers as a result of the settlement of cases.
Well, it's a little ironic. They, they manufactured the drugs that got the people addicted and now they're manufacturing the drugs to stop their addiction.
Right, right, on both sides.
Or treating an organic chemistry free synthetic.
Yeah, and, and, and it's gonna have, it's gonna have a societal impact. Just, the question is, and, and, and what people all recognize is that we end up with it here. Just the nature of how the government functions and it's kind of, we, we live in interesting times.
Just wanted to add that, uh, yeah, our transport supervisors, we have weekly meetings, um, and they have an excellent, um. Affiliation with our medical unit over at the jail. They specifically mention Ben all the time. So it's, it's a great relationship and we try and work together on everything.
Well, we're lucky to have you. And, and, uh, one other question I wanted to ask, uh, I'm not going to ask the new sheriff. I'm going to ask the old sheriff because he's been in here long enough. Uh, what, what's happened with civil process? So we, we used to have a backlog that was just.
They manage it very well by cross-training. Uh, so you've got Brian Scott who's been here a long time as the lieutenant. We've got a, a new sergeant that's, uh, very well versed in civil process. She's, she fills in a lot for the civil receptionist when, when she's out. Um, so what they do is they kind of rotate it around. So if, it, whenever it spikes up, um, they'll put more resources on it to make sure, uh, it's under control. Uh, there's nobody in civil process that says, I'm all caught up. I got nothing to do because there's plenty to do in transport. So we keep everybody busy all day long, uh, and it's managed very well that way because of the cross-training. And a lot of the civil process is what's called a votable and it doesn't make, take much training at all to teach someone to do that. So if they get a stack of a votable, which means they can just leave it at somebody's house, that's all that is, is ba- basically a paper boy delivery. Some of the more complicated items has to be done by a, a civil process deputy that's been trained in it. Luckily, we haven't had too many auctions lately because of the real estate market. Luckily, we haven't had too many auctions lately because of the real estate market. Usually things are bought up that went to default. But if you go back to like oh eight to twenty ten. Then that could happen again at some point and then we have to just reassess because it becomes, it does become a lot more complex dealing with the local, uh. Landlords and attorneys.
Now, I'll give you an example, Mr. Chairman, of, of. I thought I needed the services so, of, uh, so frequently, um, and I'll ask the, the new sheriff at the same time to think about this. Joe is always, you know, giving me the option of, of working with someone. It was Major Burke and, and, and lately it's been Captain Partey. But, you know, we'd set up a meeting for, uh, a particular Monday when I thought I needed his help and, and it turns out, uh, I can't. My transport, you know, so everybody chips in. Uh, and that way I don't have to bother the sheriff, you know, normally, but that would only. I would never call anybody from your department without going through you, no matter who it is. I don't do that. Um, and I think Joe and, and the captain and, and the major would tell you that. I don't. Um, I don't ever do that. Like if I need to talk to Justin or whatever about some dispatch thing or something to the budget or whatever, then I would go. Through the sheriff to, to, uh, ask permission.
I agree. We've had an excellent relationship and that's the only way we make things work is we all work together. All the way up to the top, which is the commission and then the delegation.
Hello, Joe. I will again thank you publicly for handling the work you've done downstairs. Uh, under some difficult circumstances, I personally appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I've known you a long time. You came from Dover and. Your bones got a class act. And I wish you a long, wherever, wherever it takes you.
Oh, thank you.
I, 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 I do have a couple of questions that I, I'd have to talk to you guys and ask you questions about the executive session, which really got a little bit of a budget, but. Well, I'll, I'll do that later on.
Absolutely. We'll catch up with you.
So there's a question from my colleagues here, uh. I'll go and share with the new sheriff, regarding their budget. There is one thing that, that we. We had commissioned a report that Ray worked on, um, well, a few years back regarding. Transportation costs and the costs that we were occurring versus the revenue that we were receiving at the jail. And because I had asked for that, I remember Ray, if, when we, because I wanted to get some idea of what the, what the. The, with the biz, from the business perspective, you know, we, we're spending a dollar over here, what are we, what are we doing over here? And it, it ran anywhere from a three to one to four to one ratio. So, but without the sheriff's department, we wouldn't have that. So it had a three to four to one savings for us.
And, and it's actually even better than now, Mr. Chairman, because they're, the US Marshal and, um, and therefore ICE saw. We highlighted to them the value of the transport and, and a year or two ago, they raised the transport fees. So what ate into some of that, so it's probably closer now to five to six to one. Um, you know, and so it generates the revenue from the jail generates about eight million dollars. Um, and most, not all, uh, uh, a lot of the sheriff's transport stuff, um, that. Um, is done for ICE and the marshals is primarily covered. I'm not gonna tell you a hundred percent is covered because it's not.
Whatever was from day one, we, 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 we were eating some of it anyway.
We, we're reading some of it, but nothing, nothing, nothing in comparison to the revenue that we're making from it. I mean, not even. Five percent, not even that. Two or three percent of the, my cost is two or three percent of the revenue, but obviously it's a hell of an investment.
I just hope you guys do a great job.
I, I did leave two open positions, uh, in the budget. Uh, so that there is some flexibility besides the chief deputy that I left in there. I did leave, there's two and a half or two open positions. Um, that are in there that, you know, they can fill to help with transports. Um, should these people become available to, to the sheriff's department.
How many, how many numbers we got compared to the D M South?
Well, we had forty and, um, I didn't want to leave this for, um, Sheriff Moon. Uh, so there was, uh, we have a requirement, they have to work at least eight hours a month or an aggregate. So we did a study and, um, we, oh, I cut seven off the list because, uh, they weren't meeting those requirements. And, um, it was nothing personal. It all came down to just. We're not hanging your certification here like a real estate license because that, that doesn't fly with police standards and training. So I just cut those seven. So we did have forty, so, um, the remaining will be, um, assessed on a monthly basis. By the supervisors in transportation will report to Sheriff Moon. And then, um, they're, they're at will employees, as long as they're working and doing what they're supposed to, great. And we've got some of them that the office would absolutely fail without. So they're absolutely critical to our operation.
And the thing is, um, uh, cause, um, Sheriff talked to me about. Uh, uh, this and, and, uh, it also sends a message to the remaining thirty-three that we're, you know. You know.
Well, at least, well, we want your help.
We want your help. You know, don't just skate by so, because you have the power of arrest. You know, and, and, uh, so I think that, you know, was a really effective thing and I think it was really good of Joe because. It would have been a tough for you, thing for you to walk into sheriff, you know, because some of these, um. Ladies and gentlemen, I think they're all gentlemen, are they all gentlemen? I think the, um, these, some of these gentlemen had been very influential law enforcement people in the. Community in the past and just now I think kind of wanted to hang on to that power of arrest kind of. Authority from the, you know, that flows through the sheriff's department. So it, it would have. Perhaps been a little more of a challenge for you coming in as a new sheriff. So I, I thought it was really great of Joe to, to, uh, clean that up.
Well, thanks. Some took it for granted that they thought they could just be able to do what they want, but they were wrong.
And knowing, knowing Joe, uh, you know, if. If the response was, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll get back on it, I'm, you know. I'm sure he took that into consideration because he's one of the fairest men that I've ever met.
I get it. All right.
Starting rate?
Starting rate for what?
For, for deputies. He, he was saying he's having a hard time.
Yeah, it's right around thirty dollars an hour now, uh, a little below that. Um, our per diem is a little higher because they have no benefits at all. But, but again, uh, you know, it's, it's a collective bargaining, um, unit on, on. Two levels, we have the supervisors' union and we have, uh, the deputies. So that's, they're currently in negotiations right now with the county as far as any further compensation. So. That part is a little bit beyond that control. Would naturally love to pay him a lot, but. Um, it, it's all, we're all accountable to budgets like everybody else is, but we're all kind of in the same boat and. Pay doesn't necessarily make people happy either. You know, you can, you can put it up to a hundred dollars an hour for state police. That doesn't mean they're gonna get the best candidates. So you gotta really want this job. We are law enforcement. But it's different than the police departments. The whole job is, is a real lot different that, that. You have to be a right fit for it and that's, that's what we tend to seek out.
How many state troopers or, or people who've been in the business before are deputies?
Um, state troopers now, uh, I don't think we have.
He's been on military leave.
Like two years now because he's been deployed. So that's one of our only exceptions because we honor that because he's deployed with the US military. Uh, whether he sticks around or not after that, he's, he's back from deployment now. Um, and it's, it's all kosher with police standards and training. He can catch up on his training, but like that's the only one we have right now. Um, but years ago, when Wayne Estes was the sheriff, this is going back like twenty years. A lot of people that were retiring would come over here and work per diem. You don't see that anymore. They're either going to some, some other type of profession or just ending it. Yeah, my, my son works at the Navy. He's been over there for about fifteen years. When, when he first went in, it was like three applicants. Uh, three, three jobs to like a hundred and fifty applicants. He says it's the complete opposite now. They hire kids out of college. Uh, they'll sit on their phones and look at USA jobs to see where they can transfer to because it's all federal. But everybody is in that position. So someone can leave here tomorrow and walk into some other office, any police department and probably get hired. Uh, and I went to a car show last summer and the Navy ad was there with a recruiting booth. You never see that. Mass State Police is recruiting, it's probably the highest paid police department in New England. They never had to recruit before and now they're recruiting. So it's, it's a big, big turn, uh, nationwide.
I talked to one of the Summersworth officers that's in the company working for you guys. So hopefully she's doing well.
Yeah, it's not a, I don't know. It's a, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, they're about a third down. Is what I understand in troopers. Yeah, they're a third down. They only, they've only had one trooper that covers from Rochester to the Mass line on ninety-five. Yeah, one trooper that covers the Mass line.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's not, it's.
Fortunately, I haven't met that person yet.
Well, it's, we're just gonna have to get through it. That's all, no one else can do it. I mean. It's so, it's so true in every, and half, and, uh, and all, all professions we've got. I just read a national statistic that said that, uh. Uh, in, in law enforcement, uh, firemen, I mean, just municipal functions, generally speaking. Over the next three years, there's gonna be five, five individuals for five positions, people retiring and only two. In behind, exactly. So it's, it's just, it's systemic in nature.
You know, for, if we do have a few minutes, Mr. Chairman, when this is, uh, over, I'd just like to kind of get you up to date on negotiations, so.
All right. So questions to the sheriff, you know, elect or outgoing sheriff and questions. Great, I'm all set for it. It's good to see you both.
Thank you very much. Sometimes that's.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Ray, good to see you. Hey, Ray, talk soon, Sheriff.
I think, well, yeah, I know, I know.
All right.
Oh, great. How about administration? We can start with that. No, regular, be the first budget in the book. And that's basically, that's the commissioner's office. You see, uh, primarily, Mr. Chairman, the budget went down slightly. Well. When you count the raises that were given by the delegation last year for the, this term. Um, if you subtracted that, this budget would have decreased. Uh, but it's gone up two thousand dollars and again, the, the raises between. The, the treasurer and the commissioners were both almost five grand. So. If you want to know where that comes from, that's where it is.
The only issue I've got, we gotta, I mean, it's not a big issue, but we should at least account for it. I did a, I did a review of them. Because Joe's traveling so much from Arlington. And based on our discussion, I mean, if we may adjust the travel account.
We added seven hundred dollars.
That was what I discussed, I had discussed with you yesterday, a couple of minutes ago. That's already in there.
Otherwise it's a. Slight decrease or flat budget.
Okay, you guys have any questions on that one?
The next one's the medical examiner. It's about six budgets in. As you know, we're responsible by statute for, um. Untimely deaths, which is deaths that don't have, uh, an adequate immediate explanation. Um, a lot of times they're done, um, they're managed with a phone call. To the, um, medical examiner's office. On occasion. Um, there's an autopsy ordered. If there is, we're responsible for the payment. Every year it's a guess. If you can tell me how many people are gonna die unattended, then I could adjust that number, but I really don't have any idea. So we. Um, thirty-five thousand seems, um, while it might seem extra from last year. In other years, it's been, it was higher. So I just kept the same number.
Yeah, especially those, those overdose deaths out in the woods.
Well, they're, they're a little different now with overdose deaths. They've been more, uh, uh, accepting of not doing autopsies like they used to. And looking at the totality of the circumstances. Well, yeah, and, and. Oh, yeah. Yeah, but, but it's a phone call now instead of a full autopsy. So it's, you know, you're looking at the difference between a hundred and seven and four thousand dollars. Uh, if this, if the totality of circumstances appears to be an overdose death. You know, needle marks, uh, paraphernalia nearby, uh, known drug history. Uh, we don't go through autopsies like we used to, you know, five or six years, six or eight years ago. When we used to autopsy everybody that died of an overdose.
Any questions on it? Here's what it is.
How many, how many, uh, drug courts, people that are in the drug court, do you have that, uh, overdose?
That die? I mean, I mean, that program is, you know.
The entire state adopted, uh, Stratford County's great method.
Yeah, there's two methods. There's a judicial method and executive branch method. We were all performance in the executive branch. And I think some of these counties are using judicial methods, some are, some are, some have. Uh, uh, contracted it out. So, okay. And as a result of all those variations. We still have more people and while we, recently, recently had more people in our drug court than all the other drug courts combined. Um, because they don't have the electormentation to do. Well, they don't have a day benefit style. They had a consultant working with us for seven or eight years that kept everybody on reservation. Well, everybody wants to drop back into silos in this business.
Is Nagel still working?
She's retired.
Does she still have a hand?
No, no, I, honestly. Sir, um. You know, she claimed to be the champion of the drug court and then had a third of the number of residents in her drug court than we had here. So I, I'm not saying that was her fault. I'm saying that I don't think she was able to rally in the troops. Because you know, drug court's only successful if the police department's on board, if the county attorney's on board and the public defender's on board. And of course judiciary. I don't think she was able to get her arms around all those people. To get the numbers that Rocky Ham should have, considering the, the, the size and population. Well, the Rocky Ham County Attorney for a long time didn't believe in drug court, just wanted to lock everybody up. She was certainly the champion of it, but I don't think could ever pull it off.
She, she lobbied us quite a bit.
No, I appreciate, you know, the work she's done because I think that's what encouraged the state to fund the drug court. On the other hand, I'm not sure everybody's taking full advantage of it. I'll just leave it at that.
Right, leave it that. Yeah, it's just the. I mean, you can make money, you, you don't need a horse to water, but if you don't want to drink, you don't want. And the other side of the aisle wouldn't agree to it in a lot of those counties because I, you know, Ray knows this. I went to, I went and spoke to all. We, we had multiple seminars and. We, we had multiple seminars and.
And I gave up. I don't do it. I don't do it anymore.
I don't do it anymore.
I don't send.
They called, they called and asked me to go up twenty times. I says, I'm not doing it because it's just a waste of time. I'm not wasting any more of my time. You, 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 you don't have the meditation for it. You don't understand it. And you gotta have somebody like, we had, we had a consultant for seven or eight years and we paid. Dave Bennett who constantly was working with those principles that Ray just outlined to, to keep everybody focused. So they don't, there's a natural tendency for everybody to fall back into their silo. It was, and frankly, it was easier for them to fall back into their silo because they're in the silo. And you know, nothing you're gonna do about it. You aren't gonna get rid of them. You aren't gonna cut them. You aren't gonna cut their budget. You aren't gonna do any of that stuff. Because that's just the nature of the beast. You got a hundred and twenty-five cases of peace they're carrying and they're gonna always have a hundred and twenty-five cases. So they don't have any incentive. There was no incentive for the prosecution. There was no incentive for the, especially the public defender's office. Okay. So you get, you, 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 you had this constant struggle going on. And we were so lucky, so fortunate to have Dave Bennett who worked with us. Who showed, showed Ray and I this stuff and Judge Mole, who was actually the real, the real guy who started this.
In, in our county.
In our county, you were another duty team that started with Judge Mole. Um, and Janice Reynolds, um, and somewhat Lincoln Saldati in the beginning, but. Lincoln had left by then in the end.
And then Tommy was fully committed.
Right. Tommy was fully committed, but without a fully committed county attorney. And the problem, the problem of any one of those people.
Yeah, but it was the two of you that brought those people in, into the.
Well, you know. I'd just soon leave the credit to George and the, and the judges and.
And I flew around the country, got the best practice, saw the best practices in other, in other states. Brought those best practices here. It was a lot of work. It was constant. Um, but there's been.
But it was extremely successful.
Successful because now, you know, all those things that we, we, when we built that jail over there seventeen, eighteen years ago. Time I told the delegation, the, the, the day will come when we'll be watching more people outside the jail than inside of it. They didn't believe me. Remember, Ray, they didn't believe us. I said, it's a leap of faith. You've gotta pay attention to what we're talking about. And just let, and we'll take the heat for it. We'll take the responsibility if it doesn't work.
Now we have six times.
Now we have six times.
As many people outside as we have in, that, that we're monitoring outside. Yeah, Monday, Monday's results was five hundred and seventy-four. Every Monday I get a report from them. It was five seventy-four. Chris still here. How many pre-trial?
Ninety.
You have more than five seventy-four. You have their families as well.
That were.
That's a big, a big plus to that.
But not only that, you're, they're, they're all still earning a living.
Well, that's, that's the reality.
They're earning a living and they're able to pay restitution.
Able to stay in their houses. They're not in.
We, we, we're not, yeah, we're not paying for their medical care. We're not paying for all those things that we would normally.
Plus, you know, community work keeps the. What I would call, well, first of all, the, the small time offenders, meaning the people that run up traffic tickets and can't pay. They can work it off in community work.
Right.
The second thing is those people that in the old days used to be sentenced to weekends.
Yeah.
They come in on Friday nights and be low, with a load on.
High.
As high as a kite and, and they. Pack full of narcotics. Can be able to sell or try to sell to other. So we cut, there's no such thing as weekenders anymore.
Every once in a while, someone will call and ask, and I'll say, listen, if they're, like, have them do community service. Have them, uh, have them do something else. You know, if, if the judge orders a weekend, then, then we're gonna do it because that's what the judge ordered. But we'll, we'll ask them, is there an alternative that you could, uh, you could collectively come up with because it just puts them. They might not even want to do anything nefarious, but they come in a couple of times. By the third time, they've got somebody saying, hey, your kids go to Horn Street School? Yeah, they'll keep going there and it won't be a problem. Just get this package from somebody. Don't ask about it. Just bring it in here, give it to us and everything's gonna be fine.
Oh, yeah.
Cause that's, that's just the nature of the, that's the nature of the business. So, you know, fortunately, we've been able to eliminate that kind of pressure from. More serious inmates onto what I consider nothing inmates, you know, in terms of. The need for them to serve jail time.
Yep.
And, you know, people don't pay their fines, aren't gonna learn anything from spending a weekend in the jail that they wouldn't learn from actually working.
I remember when Judge Brown, when he was upstairs, he, he, when you get transferred to Hillsborough South, and he asked me to go over there and speak to, you know, all the players about. To model what we had here. And I went over there and I spent the whole day with Bennett over there. And, um. That my legislators coming in and saying, well, if you take these people out of our jail, that's why we have a jail. And we're, we're just gonna, we're not doing any of this. And I said, well, don't get mad at me. I was, I was invited over here to, and Ted Gassus was mayor of Manchester. He was there. He wanted to do something about, it was tied into the homeless population. It's tied into all these other things. He wanted to do something about it. And, uh, they all said, we're not doing it. I said, okay.
There's no questions. We, we should move on only because of the timing, I think.
Yeah, I know. We got, we got.
Next thing's resource agencies. Those are the. Five agencies that, well, four agencies that we fund that directly relate to what the county does. And the fifth agency, um, we fund by really stat, by a statutory relationship. And that's cooperative extension. Now, I simply put in what they requested. The largest increase being from coast. Um, and I don't have to tell you the value. I don't have to tell you about the value of coast.
Coast is.
To bring the bus out here, uh, to transport, uh, fa- families. To transport, uh, people for drug court, to transport, um, and this is one of their busiest routes.
Uh, you said the ridership was up twenty-eight percent?
Yeah, the ridership was up huge this year.
Hey, this, it's almost the same budget as we have in a town. I mean, coast is always an issue.
Yeah. So I don't know if you have any questions about that, but I, if, if you did directly, I would have to bring the agency in themselves. Uh, unless you, you know, or you could read the documents that they've submitted.
I mean, you know, I, I mean, part of the extension, I do a bunch of variations of realization.
Well, extension, we made an agreement with them. If you remember that it, their amount wouldn't go up more than the cost of living. So.
Right.
That seems to be consistent.
Let's thank Ray.
I'm, I'm flipping bots as quick as I can. Janet's just too darn efficient. Other, other accounts, um, just a small, um. Well, I, I made a small cut there. Um, I don't feel, uh. Uh, the county convention this year, of course, we had several meetings on, on the nursing home. Uh, also, we had an organizational meeting, so I lowered it back to what it was in previous years. Um, in terms of employee appreciation, I kept it the same. Uh, most of, a lot of the money that we use for employee monetary awards due to longevity. Uh, we earn bake sales, um, things like that.
Yeah.
Um, I kept the contingency at five thousand and negotiations at five, I had twenty thousand. Okay. So that, those series of line items actually go down. Uh, the next one is Riverside Administration. That's decreased a hundred and forty folk, well, rounding it off a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars less.
That's because of the.
That's because I cut two positions. So to be specific, um. We had two people doing, doing the billing, um, but we hired, um. From Carroll County.
Right.
Who's got forty, well, thirty-five years of experience. And I'm bringing someone over from the jail to do the doctor billing, uh, who knows how to do the doctor billing. So that, uh, she comes over, well, either two hours, three hours a week or four or five hours every. Two weeks, um, as part of her job, we, it's no cost. And. So, and also we had three people in the, uh, in the office. You know, to do payroll and to handle personnel issues. One is retiring and I'm not replacing her. No, uh, that's Dot. You know, who took over for.
Yeah, for Sue.
For Sue Stedman.
Yeah.
So that lowers it.
She's retiring, right?
Uh, yeah, at the end of the year. She cut back last year to, to three days a week.
Yeah.
Really to train the, the two new people that we, cause we had almost a whole turnover in that office except for Dot. And she was, so I begged her to stay on three days a week this year to train those two people. And, um, um, she, I've talked to her and I met with the two people and they feel strongly that, um. They can manage with the help of Jill from here. So that's, that saved us a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Do they think they can do it?
Yeah, uh, you know, it's, and it's not like I'm brand new. You know, so I mean, I, I can answer their questions.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know I don't, I don't have computer access to, doesn't make any sense for, um, you know, the head of an organization to have. Computer access for payroll purposes or for payables purposes. I don't have computer access for those things, but I understand the process and I can answer their questions. Plus Jill's here, Diane's here. Um, so, um. You know, we, I think we can get through under those circumstances. It's not an ideal situation, but I think we can get through it.
All right, everyone. All right, what we got next, Ray?
And it does include, oh, by the way, that does include one thing. It does include the fact that now our admissions are done by a nurse. As opposed to being.
By the social world.
Well, what, what happened was we had an admissions person, uh, who would do all the legwork, but then simply turn it over to a nurse. So instead of that, we, we, you know, move that around so that we have a nurse now that does. The admissions directly.
That's, um.
Shannon.
Shannon.
Yeah, Shannon does that. And she's really good at it. She can make judgments about the behavior unit. She can make judgments about. And she's a very experienced nurse.
We move Michelle upstairs.
Yeah, Michelle's upstairs doing the pre, um, Medicaid application stuff. You know, before, cause we don't wanna get, you know, we've had a lot of bad debt in the past from people who have lied to us about their Medicaid status. So, um, Michelle's doing a lot of the pre Medicaid work before they go and apply for Medicaid.
Yeah, so we're not getting hosed on the other.
So we're not getting hosed on the other end.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause as you.
I think that's it, Ray, right? No, you got physician pharmacy.
Yeah, I, uh, as Hyder continues to get busier, Mr. Chairman, I needed to add some more doctor.
Doctor time.
We have two doctors, um, that cover Hyder. Um, they charge us a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Um, obviously, these, these people are dying. Um, and, and medication management. Is beyond the scope of any other doctors.
Right. Palliative care and this.
Well, it's, you're, you're dealing with fentanyl and you're dealing with Dilaudid and. I wish we were just dealing with morphine, cause you can buy morphine by the gallon.
Physician pharmacies.
You know, morphine's as cheap as it comes, but fentanyl and Dilaudid are, are quite expensive. Um, so.
Black market, come on down to Castle.
No, thanks. No, we're all, we're all, we're, we're, we're all good with that boss. Uh, but it's, it's a very, um, and, and. Also, be, we hold our doctor as one of three doctors that are board certified in palliative care. In, in the state of New Hampshire. Three in the whole state. Oh, no, no, no. We, we have, and he's on call twenty-four seven. Although there's a fill-in doctor to do like the admissions, so he doesn't have to work every day, but if we run into. And, and I don't mean to create controversy here, but there's times when palliative sedation's considered. Um, and that is a whole process where we can't, it only happens once or twice a year. Where we can't, no matter what we try and do, we can't manage the pain. Uh, and therefore we use, um, it's a whole process to get to that point. Uh, but it ends with me, um, because it's my license, um, where, um, we use medication. That, um, keeps the person alive, but they don't wake up. Yeah, so we obviously need a board certified physician.
Right.
For those kinds of decisions. And, and that's it, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, let, let me tell you, it's a decision that's caused me more than a few sleepless nights. But usually the family's the one that's begging for it because they don't wanna see their family members suffer. Well, it's not screaming, but it's, you know. We just can't keep them comfortable. It, it happens. The med, with some people, it happens no matter what medication he uses.
Right.
And I'm talking, you know, fentanyl, Dilaudid. Uh, oh, the, that, that would be more for the palliative sedation. Yeah, that's Ben with no.
Okay. All right, so we're done with the budgets?
Well, we're done with as many, as many as I can present.
Okay, so let's talk about, let's talk about state now for a minute. Where are we? I mean, next week. I mean, we could take it off. The following week, we're gonna have to do a couple of days. I would think if we take next week's off budget wise, what, what do you think? Something with still opening.
Or Monday.
Or the following Monday, or, or the next Monday.
The following Monday.
The following Monday. I cannot do the twenty-third.
Well, how about? No, that is, that is no. And that would give me time to finish everything, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's try to, let's just try to put a one, one day aside and get it all done.
It might, it, I don't, there's not that many outstanding budgets, Mr. Chairman.
County attorney, like, no.
No, no, social service, but that's, that's really me. You know, I can do social service in ten minutes.
Yeah.
Um, um.
Let's just try, all right. Can you guys do Monday, the thirtieth?
Yes.
It is the jail and nursing. And revenues.
Okay, and revenue.
I can do, I, I'm on that.
I get it. You'll have it ready by then? Pretty much?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll set aside Monday.
No meeting next week.
No meeting next week. Merry Christmas.
And, and we will be, um, you know, well, I'll be here Christmas, uh, at least five hours. Uh, I don't know, Chris, are you on for Christmas?
I'm here, uh, I'm here for some time on Christmas.
So Chris and I are here for Christmas. I'll be here from like nine to two or three.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, that way I, I can see families and make sure my residents get out. Chris will be here from probably about the same. We always like to make sure too that, that Chris, the noon time meal is the big meal.
Right.
So we, we like to be here for the noon time meal to ensure that, that everything goes well. I wanna be sure that my residents who are going home or out with families, you know, can get out in time. Plus. I, I can feed.
Yeah.
You know, I can help those residents that need to be fed. Um, I, while staff are getting other residents ready to go out. I can be replacing them. I passed my course and I got recertified. Yeah, you have to be, you have to be.
Certified.
You have to be certified to feed unless it's your family.
I was gonna say, it must be an exception because I mean, I could feed my older.
You get, no, families can feed, but if you're not a family, and then we, we have to go in. Well, our occupational therapist puts out a list every week about those people that have to be fed by a licensed staff member.
Yeah.
So there's about a dozen people that can't, I can't feed.
Right.
Uh, but there's still plenty of others that I can. They usually, staff's usually kind to me and, and. Uh, gives me someone who, who's happy to accept nourishment. Let's leave it that way.
All right, everyone.
So we'll be around, Chris and I'll be around on Christmas.
Well, we having a whole new business. Not hearing any, okay. I have questions and comments from the public regarding the agenda. You're the only member of the public here. Susan, you have anything for today?
Welcome. We haven't seen you in a couple of weeks.
I know. You're gonna wish, wish you a happy holiday.
Well, first of all, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Um, yes, I did miss. Yes, I did miss a couple of meetings, but I needed some sleep. And then you do things in the middle of the day, which makes it a little difficult when you have business. But I do have, I believe that, um, is December seventeenth kind of like the. Day where all the municipalities, um, send in their wonderful checks to the county?
That's, that's the deadline.
The deadline.
A number of places have paid us already.
Okay, and do we have any outstanding?
Diane? Has everybody paid?
We received a hundred percent, one taxes on time.
There has been times when we accepted post data checks, but so that, because it. And and I, if I could just take a second to explain that, Mr. Chairman, um, we don't want to have on, as an example. When we issue our, what do you call it, Diane, um, our proclamation.
Our warrant.
No, uh, when we're going out for a bond or our tax anticipation notes, we prepare what document?
Uh, an RFP.
Yeah, and in our RFP, they'll ask us if you've ever been delayed in collecting your taxes or anything, we don't want to say yes. Uh, we are, you know, because that dings our credit. So there's been a couple of times, uh, I won't mention Farmington. That had a delay, not through their fault, but through the, through a pros- problem with the Department of Revenue Administration. Um, so we accepted a postdated check and then just dragged our feet a day or two. It was about five days, uh, but we, we. No, we forgot to deposit the check, that's all.
Now, most, most of our payments come via ACH or a wire transfer, we get. Just a couple of the smaller towns.
We don't pay that way, but we'll collect that way. I just got mine yesterday. I just got, I got mine from Somersworth. Well, well, my mortgage company will pay it, but I was, I, oh, I was really happy with mine, and Harley went up and, and the pool got settled. I got, I was really happy. They came and looked, they didn't even tell me they were coming, and now to welcome them in.
Well, listen to these meetings, you, you tell us how much you spent on that pool.
I know, but I don't mind. Happy to pay my fair share.
Okay, and then the other thing, the other question that I have, um, relates to the jail and. As I understand that you do quarterly inspections, and then is there like a casual inspection? Reports available to the public?
The, uh, reports are available to the public. We have quarterly inspections that's done by, generally it's the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, although anybody's welcome to come in. Um, in addition to that, we have a annual inspection that's done by the U.S. Marshal Service. I believe that's an internal inspection document that does not get published. Um, there is an inspection that's conducted by the Bureau of Prisons, I believe that that does get published. And then there are multiple inspections, at least two per year, that are done by Office of Detention Oversight. Which is a, um, which is a division that comes in to inspect our operation, specifically as it relates to Immigration and Customs Enforcement. However, what we have learned is that the way in which they inspect, we learn about best practices on how to operate the facility. And we utilize it for all of the inmates, it's not just applicable to the ICE detainees, although, oh, uh, Office of Detention Oversight comes in. To look at how we handle ICE detainees, the recommendations that they make are largely recommendations that are beneficial. Or they mitigate liability for the entire population that's in our custody. In addition to those inspections, we have, um, and those are located on the ICE.gov website, Department of Homeland Security. Um, that's where, uh, that's where they publish those, uh, that's where they publish those reports. In addition to that, Office of Detention Oversight Ombudsman comes in either, um, monthly or bi-monthly. Uh, because of the way in which we operate, they, they, uh, took a quarter off because they didn't have any concerns. They have come back, there's new people, and they're gonna come in, uh, every other month now to, to basically speak with the inmate population. To determine whether or not we're treating them okay. Um, those are the inspections that, uh, that we have, uh, that, that Corrections has. In addition to the Corrections, there are, um, there are inspections that happen by IHSC, which is inmate health. Um, uh, that are done just for our medical department, and those happen, uh, what, every other day? Uh, they're. Yeah, they are, uh, they are in, uh, quite often. Those, uh, those inspections are not public knowledge, because they talk about medical care of specific individuals. And due to HIPAA regulations, those are not, uh, those are not available.
So we are the, we, Chris and I have deemed that we are the most inspected facility probably in the United States. And certainly the most inspected facility in New Hampshire that only, that only has the requirement. Of the commissioners once every six months.
Correct.
Uh, none of these other inspections are applicable to any other jail.
Now, in my, uh, in my growth as a officer and supervisor and administrator. Um, I look at the, I look at the inspections as a way in which to improve our operation. I can tell you that, um, in my younger years, I loathed the inspections. I didn't, you know, it was a, it always felt like it was a gotcha thing, they would come in and they would find stuff, and I always took that personally. But in my growth, I've been able to look at it as a manner in which we can improve our operation. And I've tried to bestow that upon, uh, the staff that I work with. And, um, and generally speaking, those inspections have made us a much better operation. And it has allowed us to be able to come in and say that since two thousand eighteen, there's been somewhere in the vicinity of about. Fifty million dollars that has been brought in, now that's not my responsibility, I'm not saying that at all, but. As a, as the administrator at the jail, there's been, in essence, around fifty million dollars that have been brought in. Because we continue to meet or exceed those standards that they measure us at. And so, uh, I've been able to kind of look at it now and say, okay, I get it. In, in inspections in the past, we would find out when they were gonna happen, uh, uh, a couple of weeks ahead of time. And we would go around and try to make sure that everything is okay. Now, what I do is because they set up in my conference room, I make sure the conference room is vacuumed, so it looks nice. If the, if the rest, and and the reason why I do that is because I want it to be an accurate representation of what we do every single day. I, I don't want it to, I don't want it to be polished and looking all nice, and I want it to re- represent what it is that, that we're doing every single day. And that's, uh, and that's what they see when they come in for the inspection.
And mostly, um, George and I go to every e- exit interview. Um, they exit every day with an interview, I'm talking here about detention oversight. Because he, they're here for four days, um, and there is usually.
Ten inspectors.
Ten inspectors. There's an exit interview every day, Chris does that, and then calls me and briefs me, if there's anything of issue, I call the commissioners and let them know. On the last day, which is usually a Thursday, so that they can all fly out, because they come from all over the country. Uh, we will attend the exit interview, um, and hear from each one of the ten people. And they have all the ICE people from Washington and everywhere else on the phone.
And normally, half the time, we've already addressed whatever, whatever concerns they raised.
Well, it's almost exclusively paperwork.
In years past, we've had thirty-six items that we've had to fix, they identified thirty-six deficiencies, now that sounds terrible. But some of those deficiencies were that we had a signature and not a printed name, or we had a printed name but not a signature. This, uh, this last, yeah, this last Ucap, we had five items.
Well, there's seven hundred and eighty-two pages of, of regulations. And and as, just in comparison, at Riverside, I reported to you guys at the last meeting. Um, a third of the way through the process of reading nine hundred and two pages of new Medicare regulations, now, they're not all new. Uh, but you gotta read every single page, because you, they don't, like, they don't highlight the new ones.
They don't give you an executive.
No, they don't, so, um, um, that, I try and discipline myself to read about twenty pages a day. And I gotta tell you, it's, it's torture.
Good reading, huh?
It's torture, it's absolute torture.
Where, where are we at as far as the ICE inmates, are we full or?
We have seventy-six today.
What, what's your capacity?
Well, uh, that's a, that's a floating number, um, I'm talking with ICE right now about being able to offer more bed space. Depending on what the, uh, what the next administration does, we want to be able to be good partners with them. Uh, again, uh, just keep in mind that our, our approach to, uh, to housing ICE detainees are. Are, um, either medium custody or high custody offenders. The people that, uh, the people that most of the advocacy groups appear to, uh, be concerned about, and they're concerned about all of them. Are the ones that are here that are seeking asylum, they're low custody offenders who haven't necessarily violated any, uh, any law. Other than that they don't have proper documentation. We've said to, uh, immigration, we're more than happy to house those if you can work with us on give them, giving them a pathway to citizenship. And they haven't been able to do that, so we take people who are, uh, who are either convicted and part of their sentence is it's negotiated that they would. Uh, they would be ordered deported, or people who have been, uh, accused of a violent crime. And, uh, as part of that process, they're going through the, the deportation process.
And, and as best as I can follow, what the Trump administration is suggesting. Is that that is going to be their first target, is the criminal, uh, illegal people. Which is what we hold, you know, as our primary hold. So we're, we've had a, you know, we've had discussions with ICE, um, about, you know.
Just a matter of wait and see now, at this point, you see what they're gonna do. They don't know, you know, how they're gonna handle it.
Yep, we're just, we're just, we've already had preliminary discussions, where they envisioned it, uh, an increase.
So we split the jail, well, we split one of the wings.
C unit, Chris.
So, pardon, yeah, we did, Unit C, that was originally, when we first moved in in two thousand four. Uh, we were, we were told that we should have, uh, at least twenty-five percent of our population available for max custody offenders. Because of the behavior inside our facility. The way in which we conduct ourselves inside the facility, and the manner in which the officers conduct themselves. We were, we had a forty-eight bed unit, and we only had two people at max, so obviously a misuse of our space. So, and i- in essence, what we did is we changed it around. Then, when we, uh, when we were working with ICE, we had low custody offenders. Our classification process is that, your classification is based off of your behavior inside our facility. It's not based off of an alleged crime, or what your, what your classification is when you come into the facility from the other agency. So, uh, we were mixing them together, ICE didn't like that, so they took twenty-four people out one day during an inspection. So we made a, uh, we made a change, um, in Unit C, and we, we basically erected a wall. Uh, that allowed for us to have two housing units. Now, that was, uh, we decided to do that because we, we saw a benefit beyond what ICE would, what ICE would want. Is that we always need additional space to house, keep separates, people who don't get along with others, that kind of thing. So, uh, while that was a, a motivating factor, we know, we knew that we could utilize it if we didn't have those low custody offenders. And so, uh, so we, we built that wall, and and we found that we've been able to utilize that space now on one of those sides. We don't have low custody offenders, we have people, uh, that are on MAT, and the reason why that is, is because. Through partial grant funding, we're, we're paying for MAT, A, and B.
Which was a big problem here.
Yep, and B, the medication assisted treatment, those that receive that have a tendency, because they have criminal, uh, criminal thinking. That they will try to divert that and sell it. But if everybody that they're housed with is on MAT, they don't have anybody to sell it to, so they take the medication. We give them programming and education, and that's been able to, uh, that's been a tremendous help to them.
Yeah, they'll cheek the med and then trade it off.
We do have the provider on board to, um, discontinue the treatment if they found diverting or attempting diverting, and it's written into the current contract that I have them sign. So we're pretty, pretty strict on that, on the guidance.
But we also understand that drug treatment is not an always positive step forward. There's frequently steps sideways or backwards.
Well, I think Carrie has explained that in the past.
That's exactly right.
The slip back, which is expected, I mean, it's, it's, we're dealing with drugs here.
Yeah, because I have one last question, didn't know that we're gonna. Do this whole great big conversation over that one question, but I did notice in the newspaper, um, that. Mr. Braves is now on the lorry list. And I'm just kind of curious, can anybody recommend a law enforcement official to be on that list? It's only, how did you, do you mind me asking how you went about that and came? Wh- where does your power lie in all of that?
I, I can, I can answer that best, I think, because George was excluded from participating in, in, in this. So, um, it, it needs to come from the head, the, the chief. Of, uh, operating officer of, of any particular entity. In most cases, the people that are on the lorry list, uh, the EES list, which is, used to be called the lorry list based on, uh, that was the case law. Um, it need, it usually comes from the police chief or the Board of Selectmen.
And in this case, who was that chief operator?
The, the other two commissioners ordered me to, to send it up. And George had to be excluded.
Because you have.
Well, because he was, he was, he was a material witness, and in fact, when we hired the MRI to do the investigation. Uh, George, I don't think you've ever read that report, have you? Uh, but we didn't share the report when it came, uh, George was excluded from the meeting. And it was, it was the other two commissioners and myself, and, and, and of course, the county attorney.
Okay, I, I just curiosity.
Now, since that happened, what do we do about credit cards, expl- explain the process, in other words?
I can, I can explain that better than, than, than most, we.
That's not related to the lorry list. They get confused in the press, but.
Credit cards are granted under my authority, um, I'm the one that has to grant, and, and so I assess the need. It's primarily for purchasing, um, and I'm the one that, uh, signs off. With, uh, Citizens Bank to determine the size of the credit limit. As well, then the credit card bills themselves are sent directly to, um, purchasing. Uh, I'm sorry, there's, they're sent directly to a, a finance. Uh, actually, we have one person, Sharon Salmon, who does all the credit cards. Every department head who uses it has to turn in receipts that match with the credit card, and then the bill is paid. Um, what, when I used, I gave up, I used to have a county credit card, I gave it up. Couple of years ago, um, but what I used to do is every time that I would use it, I would put my receipt in an envelope and send it to Sharon. She'd save it till the, the credit card came in, that way I didn't have to think about, oh, what did I do with this receipt or that receipt? She'd save them up, but I gave mine up a couple of years ago, um, it, it, in effect, I wasn't using them. And, and we use it to buy soda, uh, for, uh, resale at the commissary. And it, it wasn't actually me buying the soda, so I, I had the, we don't do that anymore anyway. Now it's through a, a vendor, but I just gave my credit card up, I didn't, I don't have a county credit card.
And the other thing too, is, you know, is that. In brave, and the share, the, on the share of situation, if someone, if someone's trying to commit fraud. There's nothing you can do about that, I mean, if, if they have a corrupt cabinet, not, they can, they can.
They can try.
They can try, they can, they can try other, they don't have them.
But, but one thing I will tell you is, Diane? What, when is the auditor coming in, in, in January?
Coming in, well, they're doing one day preliminary in January, we don't have a date for that, but they're coming in to do our. Audit for twenty twenty-four on, uh, starting March tenth, and they'll be here for a couple of weeks.
But when they do, when they come in in January, one of the first things they do is all, look through all the credit cards.
They look through.
They look through every credit card expenditure.
And every receipt.
Right, they always do.
And that's how we cooperate. Frankly. The auditor said it to, to me about, uh, uh, Jeff, anybody that flew JetBlue knows that they don't have. Anything called first class, they have what's called even more spaced seats. And that is analogous to first class. And that is analogous to first class in other entities, and that's what caused, that's what started the whole brave thing. Is he got to.
Are you allowed to be talking about this?
Sure, it's in the newspaper. That part's been.
I just wanna make sure, I don't wanna get you in trouble.
No, thank you though, but that's been in the newspaper, and and that's what started it all. And then I confronted him, we turned it over to the county attorney and the attorney general.
Anyways, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
To you.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Well, we missed you, we were waiting for you, but.
Yeah.
We even waited.
The bloodhounds out?
Yeah, we were gonna, yeah, we were gonna.
All right, well, challenge the motion, we want an alcoholic session at this point, but the personnel contract. Roll call, Commissioner Rollins, Commissioner Rollins. Commissioner Rollins.